...stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any approve? Any oppose? Motion's passed. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Nope, they're not amended.
Okay.
You just didn't get them right away.
Alright, alright.
Second.
Mayor's second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, hearing none, they're approved. Announcements, correspondence.
You want to do it, or you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright. The mayor's emergency management summit for 2019 is scheduled for tomorrow at the First United Methodist Church in Eugene. Mayor, councilors, and city officers and employees are invited, but our RSVPs were due August 22nd. Two spots were reserved, the mayor and I will be attending, and I did get permission from my husband to go too, so the three of us will be there tomorrow. The event begins at 8:30 and continues until 4:00 with a line breakfast and buffet lunch served. The event is free and there are no parking fees, which I think is why it's at the Methodist Church.
Yeah.
On Friday, October 11th, the city councilors and mayor are invited to attend a gathering of Lane County leaders entitled "Community Vitality and Natural Hazards, Assets, Opportunities, and Resilience in Lane County." The event lasts from 9:00 AM to noon at the Lane County Public Service Building, Harris Hall, 125 East Eighth Avenue in Eugene. The event is free, but you must RSVP. A teleconference with our water attorney Laura Schroeder is scheduled for next city council meeting. She was not available for this meeting. And two announcements that are not on the agenda. Charter has issued a notice that they will be increasing their fees effective on or after September 6th. The broadcast TV surcharge will increase by $1.51. Spectrum receiver will increase by 49 cents per receiver. The digital adapter will increase by $2 per adapter. Spectrum TV Select will increase by $7.50, TV Silver by $7.50, and Spectrum TV Gold by $7.50. And then, a week later, I also received from Turner an announcement that on or around October 15th, the Fox College sports channels will no longer be available on the channel lineup serving this community. And that would be the Fox College Sports Atlantic, Channel 401, Fox College Sports Central, Channel 402, and Fox College Sports Pacific, Channel 403. And that's probably what makes some people really unhappy.
For real. Says input, "were items not discussed in public here." Charles May?
Yes. Charles May, 83474 Woodland Lane. And this is very important to us. We've lived at that property on Bulling Lake since 33 years. In 86, we purchased our first purchase. We've seen lots of changes in Dune City, and we've been very supportive of Dune City in the past. There's some surprises that have happened. One lately is one that is really terrifying for us. I was driving down Clare Lake Road, which is directly above our property, and realizing that there was lots that had been sold up there, and people were wanting to build homes. And was told that a lot of the chips that were there done by the logging situation was going to be relocated and sold, or trying to find people to buy the chips. The next thing I saw as I drove down Clare Lake Road was the chips are being dispersed around the outside perimeter of the property. Of this one particular lot that's directly above us. And the direction in which it was funneled, actually funneled down from the natural flow of water off to the side, down into our property. It's unbelievable, the funneling that went with the dike that prevents water from going directly where it's supposed to go. Our irrigation, not irrigation, but our natural drainage and stuff is very awkward. We've had the guy from Dune City, Richard, go out there, and he's been up to his knees in water on the road trying to get the thing to drain. We are right now at a load where we can't take on anymore without some severe problems. Anyway, by the funneling down into that area, which is an area that's probably going to be not even where it's normally, a normal flow area, it's going to create lots of problems. One of the problems is destabilizing the lateral support of the hill. The hill is not just a little hill. The hill goes from an elevation of 93 feet all the way to 143 feet or 146 feet. So it's 50 feet of hill that's directly behind it. And we happen to have a severe hill right on our property right before that, in excess of 40 degrees. So what happens is, this is going to be an accumulation of a big mud mass. The mud mass can, you know, I don't want to sleep there with mud mass up there with this worry about tsunamis or like earthquakes and stuff, anything could trigger it, and you could be dead. So I mean, to me, it's a serious deal and needs special attention to take care of it. And one of the things, and I'm going to try to roll faster, but one of the things that's important is the grade. The grade, if it's over 15%, it needs to be engineered. You need to have professional people, soil analysis people, geological people, to where they can put their input on in a really professional manner. Right now, it's just what this guy has decided to do, and creates a real major problem for us because it's terrifying. So basically, I called Dune City, August 20th, and I said, "Hey, there's something, somebody's got to give us some help because this thing is really dangerous." So I was told that they would do a stop work order, and go out there and take a look at it. The property owner was doing this without any kind of permits whatsoever. And when the guy went into, well, first of all, I told him, called the guy and said, "Hey, we think this ought to be engineered." And he says, "Oh, I'll just have one of my engineers sign it." And I said, "Well, I think that you need to really have some thought put into this situation because it's very important." And he said, "No, I own the lot, and I can do with it whatever I want to do." And he said, "I paid cash." And so basically, I said, "Well, my next step's going to be to call Dune City," which I called Jamie, and Jamie said she'd look into it. But then, as I found out, if there was a stop work order, it wasn't allowed to even be posted on the tree because Jamie rubber stamped it and said it's okay for him to continue. And within an hour or so, he was back with his heavy equipment, terrorizing the property. Not only did he disturb his property, but there's a neighbor right next to him that has even a steeper grade. So the steeper grade is another issue that goes right down, it's going to overwhelm any kind of natural flow. So what I think is, I've got so much stuff here, we've done some research. I'm not even prepared to give a lot of this stuff away at this particular time, but I got to tell you that this is this is a real simple solution. The simple solution is to get a standard ESCP by a professional company to go in there and take a look at this because it's a death trap. And by the action of Dune City and the action of this landowner, there's liability. And liability is serious. It's a serious situation. Because the slopes exceed 15%, and this was even with the information that the landowner presented to Jamie. It shows that it's over 15, greater than 15%. And also with the GSI map, the Lane County GSI map, shows that it's in excess of that. So a simple doodle job, like was given, where the doodle job just basically says there's no grading going on at this particular time, the grading's already been done, and the excavation's already been done, which exceeds more than the 50 cubic tons. But we need a challenge, just need some help to get somebody in there because this is a serious deal. And like I say, I've got a lot of stuff here, I've got a lot of information, that's why I'm kind of fired up about it. Because Dune City needs to do its job and really protect the people and the lake. The lake, we're basically right above the lake. This other property is a fragile land zone. It has a high risk of landslides. It's really a serious deal. We've got all this information to show people. And if you get a certified geologist, he's going to have access to a lot more than we have. But I just want to say that you need to follow the rules. No more special favors for people who don't comply with the law. And protect the citizens and the property and the lake. Because we feel like we overdo our protection of the lake just as we can. So anyway, is there any questions?
No.
Got it. Is there any way that we can get a quick fix to this?
Well, we'll talk to Jamie, we'll find out what's going on and how it relates to the water flow change because there's Lane County talks about how you can't change what natural water flows.
It's illegal to do so. Just go take a look at it, but don't take my word for it. Walk it, go down there and walk it because it is a funnel. They've diked off all the water. Jamie, have you been down there?
I have.
You've walked it?
Yes, I have.
You have?
Yes, I have.
What is your thought?
My thought was he did exactly what he said he was going to do, erosion control plan. And he followed the DEQ recommendation.
But he doesn't have any responsibility to do the next door neighbor's property? He can just do whatever he wants to do there without a permit?
I haven't, you didn't complain about the next door neighbor's property. You complained about the property right behind you. Not the one that doesn't drain to your house.
I didn't even know about it until we had research to find out about it. You knew about it.
If there was a property owner, yes, I did know about it because he told me he had the cooperation of property.
And he's grading it without a permit? You didn't have to give him?
No, he didn't grade that. All he did was spread the chips around.
Oh, that's not true. Get an expert out there, this is going to be a serious deal.
Sally, did you want to add to it?
No, I do this, please, we need more time.
Craig?
I, you know, live partially in 83431 Woodland Lane. It's a death trap, it needs to be looked at. It's over 45%. And next time it rains real hard, and it comes down a mudslide like you see on CNN in California or whatever, you're dead.
I'd like to say one more thing. A lot of these grid patterns that they're working on is after he graded it illegally without permits.
It's over 15%.
If you look at the GSI reports, and we need an engineer, we need somebody besides somebody saying, "Oh, it's fine," because it isn't. The guy graded it before there was any kind of typo considerations. Even in his suggestion, his recommendation here, it shows that it's needing a standard engineered program. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Charlie. We'll take a look at it. That's it here. Presentations and training.
That's your next schedule. That's your next scheduled training. That's the one you're supposed to be on now.
Oh, I see, oh, I see. I thought maybe something was going to happen here.
I could, but you guys can do it at home if you can, don't want to take up time.
Yep, excellent. Alright, new business. Where's new business? Proclamation. Declaring the week from September 1st through September 7th as Home Inventory Week. Returning my home.
There's a There's a cover letter making requests from the Department of Consumer and Business Services of the state of Oregon. And I don't know if you want to go through that, or you just want to read the proclamation?
Proclamation. Whereas, this is the proclamation of September, declaration of September 16th through the 22nd of 2019 as Home Inventory Week. State of Oregon, County of Lane, City of Dunes City. Whereas each September is recognized as National Preparedness Month. And whereas Oregonians have witnessed and experienced natural disasters in our own community. And whereas every community member can take advantage of active steps to protect their families and neighbors from natural and man-made disasters. And whereas every family and business in Dune City is encouraged to take active steps to be financially secure after a disaster. And whereas every community member is encouraged to make sure that they are properly insured against fire, flood, earthquakes, storms. And whereas every community member is encouraged to create a home inventory to include as part of their disaster preparedness kit. Now, therefore, I, in our foresight, mayor of Dune City, am hereby declared that the week September 16th through September 22nd, 2019, be known as Home Inventory Week. And join cities across Oregon to encourage everyone to build a home inventory of their personal property, and speak with insurance agents to make sure that they are financially prepared for this disaster. Thank you. Not a bad idea. Also helps if you're broken into or anything else. Yeah. Yeah, well, that's right.
That's the easiest way to do it. You've got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I think the police department was telling us at one point in time that that's a really good thing to do, is take pictures of the property that you have, pictures of any serial numbers on the back, that sort of thing. Imagine it would be the same thing for this. Okay, we have a resolution.
As you will recall, not long ago, the city council adopted a mandate for erosion control plan for certain things. I'm sorry that they left. You guys instructed me to take out the requirement for residential properties, so we have no jurisdiction over what's going on over there.
Right.
Except he cleansed the 15% slope, and it is not 15% slope according to the topographic map that was prepared by an engineer.
Yes.
We will look into it though. But what we did when we did that was we failed to assign fees to how much it costs when people turned it in. So this guy that needed to file the erosion control plan filed it, but couldn't collect fees because there weren't any.
Right. Okay, so this is the Resolution Series 2019, number 12. Resolution setting fees for submission and approval of erosion control plan. This one, okay. Whereas Dune City Code Title 14, Chapter 141, entitled Erosion and Sediment Control, requires the preparation, submission, review, and approval of an erosion and sediment control plan prior to issuance of any development permit to be obtained and before construction or and disturbance begins within any area that is greater than 4,000 square feet or moves more than 50 cubic yards of any material, does not disturb land within 100 horizontal feet of the high water level of any lake, and does not occur on lands having slopes of 15% or greater. And whereas, Dune City Code Title 14, Chapter 141.003A, in parentheses, provides that an erosion and sediment control plan review fee shall be assessed in accordance with the provisions of this Section 141.003, in parentheses, or shall be set forth in a fee schedule adopted by the Dune City Council. And whereas, Dune City Code Title 14, Chapter 141.005, requires an erosion and sediment control plan inspection to be conducted by either the city engineer, the planning official, or other authorized city representative, and that cost thereof will be billed to the responsible party payable within 30 days of receipt. And whereas, no fee schedule has been adopted by the city that set the erosion sediment control plan review fee, and whereas the city desires to be reimbursed for time and resources committed by the staff in the review and subsequent inspections of an erosion and sediment control plan implementation. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Dune City that, one, the following fee will be added to the permit fee schedule of Dune City. A is erosion and sediment control review fee of $100. B is a simple erosion and sediment control plan first inspection of $100. C is a simple erosion and sediment control plan subsequent inspections, $50. Standard and road and driveway erosion control plan inspection shall be done by the city engineer and billed to the responsible party for costing incurred. Number two, this resolution takes effect immediately upon adoption. This resolu, uh, did we vote on that?
No.
We already did, didn't we?
No.
We had one, okay. This resolution will be passed and adopted on the 11th day of September 2019. I would accept a couple of questions. Yes, please do.
So, number one, letter D, standard and road and driveway erosion control plan inspections. Now, is that the onsite inspection, or is that the paper inspections?
That's the onsite.
Onsite, okay. That'd be the same. I didn't get how it is. Okay, and upon the first paragraph, this greater than 4,000 square feet or moves more than 50 cubic yards, comma, does not disturb land within 100 horizontal feet of the water. So, does that mean if it's outside of 100 feet, they don't need a erosion control plan?
On residential property, yes, but commercial always does. Unless it's got, you know, you're moving more than 4,000 square feet and it's got 15% slopes, higher or lower.
Okay. Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to
I have a question.
We'll get to the discussion first.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion first. To accept the resolution.
I move to accept the resolution.
Need a second. Any discussion?
There's a continuing discussion.
Jamie, did the ripperian zone change from 50 feet to 100 feet to the high water level of any lake?
No. This is, this has to do with erosion, this has to do with rain taking silt down to the lake. The recommendation by DEQ is actually 300 feet. But with property erosion control plans, they say 100 feet is good, as long as you've got your erosion fins up or your bio bags or your wattle or whatever it is, what process, whatever you're using that complies with the DEQ requirements, you have like a 1200C permit. Which is what Stewart was using.
And who is the city engineer?
The dire partnership.
Okay, alright. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes. I thought this was a lot.
It is.
Which is what the other thing looks like when you're
So you lay down there and keep the water? Any actual discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes, thank you.
You guys got your thinking caps on?
Oh, you didn't tell me that was required.
Yeah, yeah, right, so on this one. This one's a challenge. Did it to you early enough that you could read everything and go through it? In a nutshell.
Because we would have.
Huh?
Because we would have.
Because you would have.
Yes.
In a nutshell. I guess the best thing to do is start with a link, the long paper with the link, the tiny writing. Okay. Dune City, this is hers. And Dune City owes, how can you find it? Oh, from the bottom. No, I thought where we are, but I wanted to come out with the first subject matter and I can't find it. Let's just say Dune City owes a ton of money. We are upside down by 289% of what we owe hers and what we are currently paying. And that is because of the people that have been on hers, who could potentially retire and draw, and so they're trying to even that out. And so, we're way behind at the eight ball. The legislature's recommendation, or what they came up with anyway, is this plan where if we would deposit in a side account a chunk of money that they have identified for us to be, we owe them $87,205. If we deposit the minimum of $54,208, and now I am on the little tiny
Right, right.
If we deposit the $54,208, they will pay $13,552. That'll give us 67 as the total side account. And then that gets split out over the next few years. And you can, that's what this is, this is what our payments would be over the next few years. I think I got that one. Until we get down to where we're within an equal balance, according to their prediction.
How do you do it?
Yeah. The alternative is to continue what we're doing and continue to have the amount they're taking out. We are currently at 35.6% or 37.6% that we're paying for hers. And it will continue, but it will also continue to go up. Where this actually says that someday we might actually catch up. I'm coming to you guys, you know, we did have the foresight, if the budget committee does have the foresight, to allow contingency of $50,000 in general fund for what might come up. I didn't want it to be this, but it is there. The money is there, it's been budgeted, and it can be spent. But this is a decision that is too big for me to make on my own. Do you want to participate in this state program?
Given that's the question.
We're kind of, you know, we're kind of participating one way or the other.
Right. Yes.
Pay me now, pay me later.
Whether you want to or not, as a matter of fact.
Yes.
Is there a downside to participating in this?
The main thing is to take in the $54,000 out of an opportunity to use it for other things, like grant funding and
To pay now or pay later.
Yeah.
Yes, it is pay now or pay later.
I don't like Kevin thinks like that hangover, I'm for paying, go ahead and fight it up for that.
Fight the bullet and just do it, and whatever, we can't, they're $13,000.
It's going to get worse.
And then they manage the $13,000, correct? And we do get that. I mean, that is a benefit, is that $13,000. And the decreased, now that you've decreased the amount that we owe, then when they calculate the percentages, it will also be lower over time.
Yeah. Yeah.
You mean a motion?
I mean direction, and yes, I prefer a motion, I prefer action, but I can't see.
I'm just figuring out how old I am and when this gets paid. I may not be.
Won't be me either. And I do only have, the first ninety days, the program is open to apply, otherwise it's open to everybody this day, anybody can apply. They've already funded, how's that put that in?
I would--
Funded already eighty-seven thousand.
I for one would much rather be actively trying to reduce it.
Have there been claims, Jamie, by past employees--
Oh, yes.
--that triggered this?
Well, I mean, there are, anybody that's a past employee can--
When they retire, then they--
When they retire, they get a lot, yeah. They'd be lucky if you of them have died young.
Well, I move that we roll the contingency fund into this account so that we can get the state matching funds and reduce our indebtedness.
Any discussion besides Oklahoma?
Yes.
Yeah. One sided by this.
Yeah.
A lot of money. How did we get into this position?
Well, we got into this position because when we were hiring through Cardinal, we were--
Violating the law.
Violating the law. We were assuming that they were paying for the kinds of stuff that--
Retirement.
--we thought contract, I imagine they did, or they weren't.
And if I remember that, at that, at that time in the state, it was, the verbiage in the state wasn't as strong as it needed to be, and then when we went into how do we save for hers, one of the things was, yeah, that's really a strong language, and so now these temporary services had to pay into that, thus, thus we got caught on the other end of it.
It got more strict.
Yeah, real strict, yeah.
As did the definition of part-time.
Exactly.
Which for a long time, we were able to rely on as a city, but now it's too strict. We, I mean, that's ten hours a week.
Wow. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it, Jamie, so go ahead and get us up to date as best we can.
All right. Um--
Replacement of door locks, city hall, which we no longer can afford because we just spent fifty--
Right, because we're just, you're kind of right there, so I would like to look into it a little bit more, but there have been times when I have received phone calls from, say, the cleaning, our janitorial services on the weekend, and say, she got here, all the doors were unlocked and lights were on, and, you know, and Jaslyn, Jaslyn and I have separate locks on our doors because we're, the stuff in our office is, you know, private and needs to be more secure. She came into her office, the door was open, and she hadn't been here very long, and she didn't realize that there's a light back in there, and the light switches behind one of the mats, and that light was on. And she couldn't figure out how to turn it off, because she didn't know how to turn it off. So, yeah, somebody's been in here, and we don't know who. All the keys have been accounted for, so I don't know what it is, but it's got me worried, and I think now with as much, it keeps happening and happening and happening, and now lately we have had certain Excel spreadsheets that we rely on very heavily, totally mixed up. Somebody went in and took this, this section, highlighted it, moved it down here, moved that up there, and messed them all up, and it's taking us hours to figure it out and put it back.
All right, Rory.
I, I didn't even have a fake key, but I can--
That's scary.
So I would like to lock the doors.
Yeah, I think it's--
Do we have a guess, and does it want to take money wise to replace the marks?
It looks like they're gonna be about a hundred bucks a piece, and there's only five. We don't need to do the outside doors, they're, they're fine. It's just what I call the inner sanctum doors.
Okay, wow.
Should we look into electronic locks?
That's exactly what was recommended by Melissa House, our new receptionist. She did a whole lot of research and gave me a bunch of research, but she says this way you don't have to rekey it, you can just go in and change the code.
Like a, like a--
It's a complete code.
And you can reset the--
Especially since we're only doing the interior ones, it's not like we're doing anything here.
Right. It would work on these other doors, but you'd have to change outdoors too, but, but no, they're gonna be fine, it's just the inner sanctum.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm looking for the money.
If you had people coming in, I don't see where we have a choice.
No, I, I'm--
So, I have some experience with this because I work, used to manage a data center, and some of those aren't very expensive, but they log times that they're unlocked, and if people come in, you can have separate accounts saved to them, and I, I mean, it might be more than a hundred dollars, but that would give you far better control because you know the times they were, and you know who they were.
Right, and then also too, our security system, which is still a good camera security system, except for the one, the basic program, the very first program, we probably need to update that, because right now, the only way to look at the tapes, if you don't have a time to check, is real time, you sit there and watch the whole thing.
You can't pull out a certain time or date to go to--
That must be the cheapest.
Well, yeah, if you know when it is, yeah, if you know when it is, you can get, you know, but generally, it's like sometime overnight after six o'clock at night till nine o'clock in the morning, you know? And so, you're kind of busy all day long.
Yeah.
Watching dark and bugs, yeah. So, it would be nice to have a more modern system, but we'll wait until we have a nice, you know, yard sale or something can make that many.
What would the electronic lock cost, Jamie?
They're the same, it's about the same, it's about a hundred bucks a lock, so, yeah. That's not including installation, but Melissa said that they were able to do it themselves at home, she and Matt did it themselves, so it can't be that difficult, maybe Shirley, Duke and I can figure it out one day.
Sounds very great.
Yeah, takes a screwdriver to do it.
Hammer.
Or sticks a hammer.
Thank you, I just really need to do that.
Sure you got the message to do it.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, you better put it on record so that--
Oh, yeah, I think a motion to spend five, a hundred dollars a lock.
I thought we already gave you the authority.
You did give me the authority to five hundred.
Okay, there you go.
All right, I'll tell you again.
Yes, sir. Motivation to negotiate.
Okay, good, thank you. The other thing is the computer systems, I don't know if you are having the same problems at home that we are, we learn more every day that the updates that Microsoft is doing do not gel with Windows, and things are crashing. You know, if all of a sudden you see something start flashing on your screen, be prepared because it's probably gonna go away.
Every time they do one, my printer disconnects and it takes me two days to get it back.
And that's what we've been going through. It would, I'm, I'm asking a guy to give us, give us a quote on how much it would cost to bring us into the twenty-first century, where we have a server that all of us work on, where I don't have fifty-seven backup drives in my fire safe under my desk that I have to carry home with me every weekend, and this would be one backup time.
Yep.
And it's also backed up, so, anyway, that's coming, and I was hoping he'd have it today, but he didn't, so. Now you're down to appointment of the--
Yep. Consideration appointment for water testers.
James McCall, who has served as our water meter reader for the last two years, possibly three, I think he helped out the first year with somebody to learn how, and he's been doing it ever since, and I plan on him doing it again this year.
Okay. Anybody know James, anybody want to?
Thank you.
Yeah?
I would.
You know--
We know him, we have him.
Okay.
We know him, but I'll take anybody who wants to help on Silks, he's a nice guy.
And I second that motion.
No. Any further discussions? Should we appoint James McCall? Anybody in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed besides James? All right, get him to work. No executive session, old business, emergency storage container.
Do you have anything to add, Al?
Boy, they're pretty consistently priced, they're, by the time you get them here, you can find them cheap in San Francisco, but--
Unless you're going anyway with a great big old truck.
With a big truck, right, shipping kills you.
Yeah.
I did talk to a contractor yesterday, just one, just out of curiosity, and asked him to put together an, a quote for actually constructing one on the ground, stick-built, and so that we can do some sort of containers, and he felt that he could do it a lot cheaper than buy the container and putting it in place, and that it would look nicer, he could make it look like city hall.
I think he could do it.
So, I'm waiting for that, he brought the plans by today, he wanted me to go over them and say, you know, well, where do you want the windows, where do you want this, and all this, so I've got that, and I'll get that back to him. In the meantime, we have that food that something needs to be done with, because it needs to be kept cool, of course, the weather's changed, you know, so, you can just leave it where it is.
And probably a better usable space, that's usually why the forty feet long too.
That's the other thing, I did tell him forty feet long and ten feet wide, perhaps twelve would be better, but the ten feet wide, yeah. And the way he, I asked him to design it was, you know, originally, we were just talking about one, and then I got talking with some of the ladies in here in the office, and we thought, well, if you had one there and then one there, and then ultimately put a roof over, that'd give you this area in the middle for evacuees to sleep or camp or whatever they wanted to do. So, that's how I asked the contractor, I said, okay, phase one is to build the first one, the storage thing, and you put the roof up like this, and then phase two would be the other storage, and then roof them together and tie into the roof that was already over here, and kind of, and so that's the way he's drawn it, he's drawn it in three different phases, and, anyway, I mean, because lord knows, we're not gonna have the money all month to do it all.
Is there a need to be forty long and narrow like this?
I was just trying to take advantage of the full width of the lot, more than anything else, because we are restricted with the location of the power pole, which could be moved, but we do have the septic and the drainage system on that side and the well, but the well's not working very well anyway. So, we're kind of restricted on space because of that, but--
Square building here, easier.
Yeah.
Easier and cheaper.
How many windows, what are you gonna put in there?
I wasn't really planning on windows, I was planning on--
That's where I'm going, I don't think windows would be good for--
Access doors, that's all I'm, although--
You want high security.
Right, I want high security, I want very few ways to get in, but I also want it to serve as the office so that when people are coming to get supplies, we have someone in there who is tracking what is handed out, how money they got, and this sort of thing, so that we can see reimbursement from FEMA, which you're gonna learn all about tomorrow on how to, so that we can get reimbursed for these things, so it'd be like a little office in the front. Secretly, at some point in time, I'd like to put plumbing in there so that people who work here can take showers, teasing, it's just something I was thinking about.
There's a lake.
Have you looked into hole-in-hills and tunneling for that? Hole-in-hills are actually very good for earthquake construction because of their, or can do the subject foundation effect.
I have not, but it seems to me like, which is what, kind of what he's showing me in the plans, but it does have to be climate controlled, so it does have to be insulated and all that good stuff.
You can do that--
You know, electricity and, and venting and all that variation.
Well, I like the idea, rather than get air, the stick build, I think it goes along, you know, kind of with it.
Well, it looks really nice when you see all three phases together, it does look just like the front of Dune City Hall going over there, you know, which sounds kind of nice, but, because I know Counselor Orr had expressed a concern that he didn't want it to be--
Yeah.
--an eyesore.
Okay. IGA with Lane County.
The IGA with Lane County, we have one, it's still in place until, that was our IGA, and it's still good until 2021.
Okay.
So, that's why the dates were old, it was like, four years, yeah, four-year contract, so it expires next year, so we'll address it when we get there next year.
Town hall for Westlake area.
We had discussed the possibility in the most recent goal-setting session, holding a meeting with just the Westlake residents, and so I thought I better put it on the agenda or we'll forget and not get it done next year.
Good idea, should be done.
I am gone for virtually the month of October, but you don't really need me there.
I think something like that, like the winter months, I think are nice for that kind of stuff, you know?
Sure.
I'm gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone hunting, September, October, so, what I headed to November is what I was thinking, if that's not putting it out too far.
No, I think that would give us plenty of time, where I'm going to be gone most of October.
Early November, I think, we'd get a lot of snowbirds be heading out, end of November.
Okay.
Shall I just pick a date?
Pick a date in the--
Tell me if there's a day that works better, I know some of you have activities, and will it be in the evening is the next question. Evening or daytime?
I'm pretty flexible.
Evening, if you want to get more Westlake residents, because there's some that-- That's true, they're, they're younger.
Yeah, then we better do it. Evening, yeah.
Early November evening.
Right. Okay, then a town hall for infrastructure, citywide.
We can table this one if you want to, and tell you after you've talked to Mr. Scher, about what the future of the water system is, that might be a wise thing to do.
Yep, just hang on that one for a little bit. The dreaded water meter contract.
Oh, it's not that bad. It's this one right here.
Yeah.
They would charge us a hundred and eighty dollars a month to read all the meters, there would be a one-time charge of a hundred dollars for software setup and everything.
And then we don't have to spend twenty-five thousand to buy our--
At least not at this point.
--literally, stuff. That pays for a lot of hundred eighty-dollar months, I look.
Sweet.
And a person in city hall.
Didn't do math, can we do a hundred and eighty times twelve and tell me what it is?
Twenty-one sixty, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. That should work out just fine, because we pay twenty-five hundred right now for the meter, the guy to go out, and for me to, I mean, and more, when you count how much time and all the stuff, doing data entry.
You need a motion? Yeah, I think we should. I entertain a motion to have Jamie go ahead and sign this agreement, or meter reading service agreement, Morgan Water Services, Inc.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's good and done. Finally, thank you.
IDAF is a lot of reading material?
Oh, yes.
And it's just the update, to fill you in on what's going on so far. There's still debate going on among the attorneys, the best way to proceed.
Well, yeah, because they could pay to do that. If they'd have listened to Turk in the first place, they would have had a problem. Do we, I, thank you for the update that gets us from the two thousand set--
It's very rough.
Right. Did we, my question is, did we have an actual written agreement with Lane County when this happened? Did we, my question is, did we have an actual written agreement with Lane County when this happened? This latest one, the big pact took you to, through 2017. And then, when Fred was still here, they did another one where we ended up with the unimproved roads, but not the approved roads, improved roads, right? But...
That was the first thing I did.
Right, exactly, but did they, was there actually a physical signed agreement from Lane County to us, or was it just...
It was correspondence, and it may have just been email, because I can't even find it written.
Yeah, see, so...
I think it was email that, because they had said, would you take these? In an email, and we, and I brought it to the council, and you guys took action, and told me to tell them, yeah, that'd be fine, we, we, it, we, it would be fine, we would love to take those roads, if you bring them up to current standards for Dune City, you correct the drainage issues on North Pioneer Road, and any other drainage issues there. I mean, at that time, that was before Dyers started collapsing into the river. And so, um, and they came back with a no, no, the council, the commission doesn't want to do that. Um, and I think at that point, they did offer, what about just the unimproved roadways? And I mentioned that, and, and we have so many residents that are interested in obtaining those unimproved roadways, um, now, that's why we did what we did.
If you notice in the, in the, uh, update that Jamie provided us, Jeff Turk was, I think, had the best idea early on, was to, when the county foreclosed on the land, because you have to say the land of the roads, because they own the land under the pavement of some roads, uh, to just undo that, they didn't do that. So because of they didn't undo the foreclosure, then they appear to have deeded us the property, if that's correct. If, if that's the case, then, uh, we're gonna have to do, I mean, we're gonna have to do all sorts of things. Inventories of the roads, and which roads do they own the dirt under the pavement, which ones don't they? Yeah, it's, it's going to be a complicated thing. Uh, it's, in my opinion, we should, just, my opinion alone, it does affect me, so take everything I say with grace, yeah. Yes, I think we ought to get the lawyers talking about segregating out the unimproved roads before we even start talking about the improved roads, because the improved roads are gonna be difficult.
The unimproved roads are separated out in the deed itself, where they conveyed it to us, the quick deed, because they have specific legal descriptions in there. They're not surveyed legal descriptions, but they have legal descriptions of the unimproved roadways, and the, the map, the colorful, this.
Non-colorful map. Do they, I mean, do they have a description of each and every road?
Each and every, uh, road of the black hash mark, the orange hash mark, hash mark, they still have those, they didn't include those in what they conveyed to us.
Okay.
Now, the orange hash marks, all of them, except for these down here, anything below Darlin's down here, that was subject to a lawsuit, that was filed by the Darlins.
Darlins, right.
Right, and so that, those are all, those have all been designated by the court as public, local access roads. And so, in, at one point in time, and I don't know when this happened, but I ran across it today, in the paperwork, at one point in time, Lane County named all of the roads, declared all of them to be local access roads, and filed a document to that effect.
Correct. But I think that was...
I think that didn't, didn't fly.
But I think that was a return.
Right, I think that's what happened.
Right.
Yeah.
In 2006.
And that's when they came back, well, it was recorded in 16, let's put it, yeah. So, um, that's when they came back to us, and hey, do you want them? And we said, no, unless you do these things, and then, and then when they said, what about just an improved, unimproved roadways? We said, yes, as long as you guys do all the preparation, you do all the surveys, you pay for all the legal fees, and all that stuff, which they did.
So...
But, our attorney now is saying that she's not sure what they did was legal. And, um, that's the last comment I had from her, she says she's gonna look into it further, and, and see, um, we discussed it very briefly, she mentioned the possibility of a quiet title action, that would probably put the whole thing to rest, uh, because there are time constraints on reversing now on the foreclosure.
Yeah, it was...
So, I, I don't know, and she's not spending a whole lot of time on it, she knows, because I told her, you know, this is already costing us some money, we don't think doing anything about it, and just let it sit, but she is trying to figure out a way to get this whole mess straightened out, and maybe a quiet title action funded by both Lane County and Dune City would be in order, and that way everybody's on board, and it's an agreement thing, and, and then the, I don't know. I don't know, so I'm gonna wait till she says.
But, you know, and that's fine, uh, and if we did that, that's great. However, at that point in time, let's, let's say that that does happen, quite deep, we end up turning around with, it'll be a lot of work for us, anyway.
Yes, it will be.
If you walk some of these roads, that, these unimproved roads, uh, there's structures on them, there's, you know...
All you have to do is go on Google Earth, you can see that, well, look, this guy's got his house half built on it.
Half, oh, yeah, so, uh, each one will have to be taken separately, and, and figured out how to do it, you know? So, everybody, you know, will go through it, I'm sure, parcel, piece by piece, with everybody once we, and the other thing is, we don't, we don't have to do it all at one time, either. I don't think we could.
No, and my, what I have been telling people who have been interested in doing that, is that they have to communicate with all of their neighbors, because they have to all be on the same page. We are not gonna be negotiators, we are facilitators. You guys work out the details, and we'll help you get there.
There's a real nice form that Florence has, that I, at the port that I used, for 26 of various properties. You go around, everybody signs a thing, and this goes to them, that goes to them, good to go, you know? So, it's, you know, once, once we get to that, uh, but yet, we do not, we do not want to be the people tromping down the road saying, Karen, you need to get this signed, it's between neighbor and neighbor. Cool, thank you. Consideration of agreement with Oregon Water Services.
We already did, though, but it wasn't in the tail end of E., I just got, that was with the, with the agenda.
All right, mayor's report, I'm here. Thank you for the condolences, I will be missing next month's meeting. I'm gonna actually make a drive back there, take care of business. So, uh, thank you very much. I don't have anything, I've been trying to catch up with Jamie the best I could, and I will get on my trainee as soon as you send me that link, Jamie, I'll, we'll get that done, before wrestling season starts. Because then I gotta go through all of that.
You do, and I don't have to do harassment training there.
Yeah, exactly, concussion, all sorts of stuff. All right, thank you. Uh, community center report, we'll take them in order here.
First thing we did since last meeting, we installed a four emergency eye cleaning stations, one in each bathroom, and then in the kitchen, common kitchen area. Next thing, Jamie found a very nice two-burner wood-burning stove that would be able to adapt into that fireplace. And she was wondering if we could get a water jacket put around it, I'd take it over, and the person that could do that asked me how much money we had to spend. And he goes, why don't you just put a kettle on top, you know? So, and then the way this thing is configured, it would lend itself to that very easily. So that might be the way we go, but it's a very nice wood burning, it's actually, I, I would estimate, it was born in the 1950s, but it's in excellent shape, very nice. And, what was the other thing, there were three things. When I came over this weekend, it was raining like in a gutter for gloves, and it was water falling. So, I cleaned, I cleaned the gutters.
Thank you.
Still seems like there was one other thing, but I guess that's all. The water, the heating water up for here, and eye cleaning, and the gutters, so that's what we're at.
Councilor Snow, water quality report.
Um, we tested both lakes again, but silkus, we tested an hour after the rain stopped. So, the results on that are out of sequence with normal results, um, due to that. But, we went out and tested anyway, but it was very interesting to see the results, and how different...
With fresh water, right there, yeah.
Well, no, actually, because it stripped of all the dirt.
Oh, it did.
It did, so there was a lot more sediment, and where we can usually see eight to 10 feet in silkus, you could only see two. Very different, so it was very interesting to see the results.
It wasn't the falling rain, it was the rain rushing in.
Yes. So, very interesting to see that.
Well, it works, Jamie.
Um, I haven't heard nothing about any of the grants that we've made application for. Richard is fixing a pottle over on Buckskin Bob.
Fixing a couple.
The city came in, and, uh, city of Florence, came in and trimmed, um, Muddland Lane, because we were getting complaints about it tearing up boats and trailers and stuff, and that's in there. Other than that, that's about it for right now, so... If anyone has concerns about a particular roadway that needs to be addressed, please let me know. I've got three crews now that I can try and, I mean, two of them cost me money, but I can sort of, or I can get them out there, if it, if it's really, really bad, I'm out there to go.
Okay. And, city administrator report.
Well, emergency services.
Oh, emergency services.
We log, we log report is in here. We are looking at redoing the, or updating the emergency operations plan for the area, and trying to put the right positions where possible, with the right titles, instead of saying, well, John Smith is gonna do this, well, John's gone now, you know? And so you're constantly updating, we're gonna try and tie it to positions, so that's good. And that's coming up. And then, uh, my report, coastal caucus was fabulous, it was nice to be given an opportunity to discuss concerns to Dune City with our postal representatives and experts in the field. Uh, emergency preparedness has become a very hot topic. The meeting tomorrow, should, you should, we should both come away tomorrow knowing exactly the procedure for declaring an emergency, and the, I hope, how to go about tracking and verifying the information for the numbers assignments, and that sort of thing, for use of materials associated with recovery. I met with Kyle Hughes, who was one of the Eagle Scout candidates doing the project at the basketball booth, in the area at the end of Scroose Drive, and while I'm thinking about that, I'm gonna bring it up right now, um, Kyle is contemplating putting in a bench down there, and he would like to have it dedicated to someone. And so, at the time, I just happened off the top of my head, I was working with Lee Rachel's kids on, on helping them draft Lee's obituary for the newspaper, and, um, so I said, yeah, we've had a couple of people die lately, and perhaps that would be a good one to go with. But I, it's gotta be a decision made by the city council, who, and we've got so many people that have been wonderful over the years, that it would be nice to come up with someone to dedicate that bench to, and so I'm open to Kyle, and Kyle is open to ideas, I'm thinking, might think that might be, for the...
What kind of bench is it, I mean, what, what are we making, what's it being made out of, materials?
I have no idea, well, most likely you would, most likely.
Well, my, my thought was, you could, we could dedicate it to Dune City volunteers, add names to it, if it's out of wood, we could add names to it, as, as these people that have been, as they passed, and have, you know, helped the city in some way, so we could just continue to add to it. If, if that's possible.
I'll have to look into it.
Yeah, see what he's making out, making.
He should be in his proposal. Right, I know, so I'll have to call his mom, and get him over. Do you want me to come down there? I can find out right there. Yes. She's the assistant scout leader for the church.
She has an in.
She has an in.
All right, anything else?
Nick Haxson over at DEQ is helping us get a second set of all the equipment we need for the water testers, and to help me to figure out the best way to upgrade all the information for DEQ. We dealt with a complaint regarding a woman doing her yard work in the new, and then the alteration on storm drainage issue. I did issue a stop work order, by the way. And it was removed later that same day, after he came in and filed the arrangement control plan.
Should we go look at that, Jamie, or should we stay out of it?
It is Stu Mar, for, and Stu is now very sensitive to people trespassing on the property, but I'm sure people would not object if you called him first. And you guys know where Stu works, most of you know?
He lives on Roderick Denver, you know?
I don't know where he lives, but he's building a house there, that's, that's...
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, Roderick Denver, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I was thinking of him.
And, um, by the way, I also did, just to fill you in on that, I also contacted, um, DEQ and Division of State Lands, they looked in their records, they know that there is a seasonal drainage there, but it is, I don't know, it is not an ephemeral, or it isn't ephemeral, I can't remember now, it's been a couple of weeks since I talked to him, meaning that they don't regulate anything where it only flows water on its rains, and that's what this is.
They're not changing a creek or a river, or...
Right, not changing the, the flows, that, of anything that they have record of, let's put it that way. And DEQ did come out, DEQ did come out, and they gave me the list of the material that they're supposed to be using, and Chuck was using all of them. He used the, he had the coconut fiber he had, and he built a berm around the building site. The, the bone of contention is, is that berm close to Mr. Bang's property? And according to the measurements, it's 65 feet away. And, and then he's complaining about the next property, which is not Stu's property. The next property does not back up to Mr. Bang's house, but it backs up to an unbuiltable lot that is straight down, that does back up to the side of Mr. Bang's house. So, I mean, he's got, look, legitimate thing, I can pay the $5,000 to have a contractor come out and look at it, I mean, have the engineer come out and look at it, I just, I just hate that, but I, I will, if it needs to be done. But he did call me, and Mr. Bang called, said he was going to sue, and my instruction from the attorneys and from CIS, when someone calls me to do that, I'm not allowed to talk to them anymore, I reported to pre-loss, and I reported to our attorney, and that's what I have done. So, Mr. Bang is upset that I won't call him back.
No, you can.
I, I can, no. Don't threaten to sue me.
This is the first, that I personally heard of this, and, you know, we've heard one side of the story, obviously. He seemed very concerned.
Yes.
And that was why I just, I'd like to get a hold of Stu, I'm not gonna argue that.
And there may be a legitimate concern, we could get an engineer out there, and he says that, but according to the topo map, the only area that has 15% of crater slopes is right on the edge of the property, and all declared was where the home was put about. That's, I mean, that's the only place where the, the berm was put around it.
Okay.
We can look into it some more.
Anything else, Jamie?
I don't think so.
Get the order, Tom, anything?
Nope.
I have a question. Just from the Office of Legal Counsel, this is marked confidential, this man around from you is just confidential?
No, that's Oliver.
Nothing?
I would like to make a comment. I'm seeing a lot of butterfly bush around in everybody's yard. It's actually becoming a problem down at my ranch. It is listed as a noxious weed. It should not be let go. The Oregon State website says to cut off the flowers so it doesn't spread.
Kind of like Scotch broom, same kind of thing?
Yes, yeah.
Kinnevasive?
There's a lot of them spreading out.
But there's a difference between the noxious one and the one that you buy at the, at the, hopefully at the nursery?
Actually, it's illegal to sell butterfly bush in Oregon.
All of them, purple, just the purple one?
The Oregon website said butterfly bush. There may be a different page that says specific kinds, but...
I know, but, well, it's the one that has...
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of them now. I just made it on record for people to know though.
It's probably not a bad idea for us to go through about springtime and look up these different noxious weeds and things that are gonna be sprouting and get a public notice of Scotch broom and whatever invasive weeds.
We've been down that road, huh, Jamie? Remember years back, the, we did the thing with Scotch broom, I mean, we were...
That, that, yeah.
That stuff is like bamboo and blackberries.
I had a friend call me the other day, oh, she emailed me on, no, she emailed me and she attached a photo. "What is this plant? This plant has this beautiful, we want to plant it in our backyard." That's horse tail. Out of the world, which I love, plant that in your backyard.
Susan, anything for the good of the order?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have, we did entertain a motion to... Uh-oh.
Tag it.
We're, we're a jerk.